The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most holy restraints, God be coming for you one more time in your presence. Father God, as we go through this meeting in this day, Father God, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your understanding, we ask for your leadership, Father God, that we will be able to do what we need to do, Father God, so we can put this to rest, Father God, so we can move forward, Father God. Father God, we ask for your very blessing and your search Jesus name. Anybody say amen?
Amen.
Thank you. This time I'll call for a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for council members to join me down front to read our proclamation that Vice Chairman Clark is going to present to our Treasurer, Ms. Berna Garvin, for her years of service at Jasper County as our Treasurer. Okay. This time we're going to read our proclamation and start with, whereas the Jasper County Council would like to recognize the public service of Ms. Berna Garvin, Jasper County Treasurer, as she's provided to Jasper County, and whereas Berna Garvin has served as position of Jasper County Treasurer for twenty forty years and two months, providing billable service to Jasper County, and whereas Berna Garvin has dedicated her power and compassion to assisting citizens of Jasper County, and whereas Berna Garvin is devoted as an elected official, having been elected by the people of Jasper County as Jasper County Treasurer, not once but twice, and whereas Berna Garvin was first elected by the people of Jasper County in nineteen ninety-six to serve as an elected official under the title of Jasper County Treasurer, holding that position until two thousand and one, and whereas Berna Garvin was again elected by the people of Jasper County in two thousand and four to serve as Jasper County Treasurer for a second time, serving until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas in recognition of Berna Garvin's dedication to Jasper County, to citizens of Jasper County, and to many other entities she has been involved with throughout her many years of service, is deserving of public recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved and proponent, the Jasper County Council duly assembled this twentieth day of June two thousand and twenty-three, has adopted this proclamation in recognition of the many contributions to Jasper County by Berna Garvin, thanking her for years of dutiful service. And this will now be presented by Vice Chairman Barbara Clark.
Thank you, Berna, so much. You've done a wonderful job.
No, come in close. Want to say anything, Bernard?
Well, I'll say like this. It's been a pleasure serving the citizens of the county and this surrounding areas as well. I enjoyed what I did, and I love the citizens of Jasper County. And I always feel like this, there's a beginning, and there is an end. And at that end, there's another beginning. Life ends for all of us. So we should think that we are here for eternity. Thank you all.
She's also a great servant, too.
Okay, next we have, Mr. David Teller, consideration of resolution R dash twenty twenty-three dash ten to authorize Jasper County to obtain blanket for debt insurance to cover eligibility, county officials and employees pursuant to the authority of four dash eleven dash sixty-five of the Code of Law for South Carolina matters related to you, David Teller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. In olden days, every elected official had a separate bond that they would pass or purchase. In modern times, since two thousand and five, the state has allowed us to buy a blanket bond for all our public employees and public officials at once, as allowed by law. One of the two things in that particular statute that we have to watch is, one, if you change companies of coverage, you have to pass a new resolution, and it requires a resolution to council acknowledge their duty of blanket bond. This accomplishes that. We recently changed companies for a year so the travel to increase our coverage to a million dollars. So this is just a legislative follow-up, finally, to validate what we have to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Kim? That's that. So, Mr. Gobay, that's Chairman Clark. This time we call for a motion.
I make a motion to accept this, like thirty.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Motion Carriage. Next item, Kim Burgess, consideration of resolution R dash twenty twenty-three dash eleven allocating one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to the auto fund received by Jasper County to be paid to the Regional House Trust Fund. Ms. Burgess.
Good morning, Chair, members of council. This is a resolution affirming the political desire to expand the Regional Housing Trust Fund study area, and also to fund or to contribute Jasper County's portion, which was agreed to be approximately three percent of the American Rescue Plan from the county received. And for Jasper County Year One, that is the one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars that this resolution mentions and seeks your approval for today.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Gobay? That's Chairman Clark.
Kim, I just have a comment. This is something that's very important to Jasper County. Anybody who knows about it, it's housing trust unheard of in this area. Rebuild is the only other one that had it. And it's affordable housing, so when we have the industry coming in here, they have housing to be in, and they're staying in Jasper County. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's just not a something there. It's something immense in Jasper County.
Thank you for this comment. That's that. This time we call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that this resolution will accept that it is one hundred and seventy-five two hundred and forty.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Motion Carriage. Next, Ms. Kim Burgess, consideration of budget ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, final ready attack for public purposes in Jasper County for fiscal year beginning July first of two thousand and twenty-three and ending June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you. Good morning again. This is the firm and final reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-three. Their total budget is fifty-one million, six hundred, let me make sure I read it right, fifty-one million, six hundred, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. It's a balanced budget, and it includes the millage rates for both the county and for the school district.
And Ms. Burgess, the county has not increased the millage rate, but for the county, correct?
It is not. It is the same as last year. Yes, sir. Sir, the...
Any questions, Mr. Gobay?
Mr. Gobay, did any of taxes go up in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, considered in twenty twenty-two?
The taxes did go up. The total amount of taxes went up because of the reassessment, but the millage rate went down. So that was, so basically the millage rate went from one forty-one, I believe, was to one twenty.
Do you know what percentage it went up compared to twenty twenty-two?
I do not have those documents in front of me. And I sure would be happy to provide that, but I don't know the amount. The total amount from, like total dollar amount, I'd have to get that for you.
I would like, I would like to see what the difference is between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Total tax is like...
The percentage did go up.
Okay. I can provide it.
Four-one.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Mr. Gobay, any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Kim?
Yes. So, our cherry point, the revenue from there, some going up from five sixty in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, this revenue is seven hundred and twenty-six thou- six- nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. What's the increase coming? I don't see much development over there.
Well, we did have the reassessment last year, so that would have increased it potentially. And that's largely the difference, because the millage rate actually went down for cherry points of, of the reassessment taxes.
Tom Levy, fire arrest, Charlotte, mine, for salaries, two thousand. You have three point five million dollars to just me. And that's only half, I don't know how many people there, but that's not the full salary. Why is it going to be the full salary if you had everybody there? You're not getting that, but I'm just saying.
I'll add that to you. I have, I have to credit you that I don't have a decently amount of, but I'll check and provide.
Three point five million dollars, and in the comment you had, that's not the full amount?
Correct. That's just, that, that would be some fifty percent or so because of not all we hired at July one.
Right. That's all I have.
No other questions? This time we'll call for a motion for approval, disapproval of the budget.
I go for a motion that, I make a motion that we accept the budget provided by the county administrator and finance person of Jasper County.
Second. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Well, we already got a motion on the floor. So we got to vote up or down. At this time, we'll call for a motion. We got a motion, we got a second. At this time, all in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Those not in favor? Motion failed for lack of majority. We have another motion on the floor.
What's your motion? Okay. Yeah.
Is there another motion on the floor? The first motion failed to accept budget acquisition.
I'd like you all to say why you're not accepting the budget. We need to know because a lot of us are meeting here at the end of the week.
Well, my, my explanation is, is when I run for this job, I run for this job, I told most of the people that I would not put a tax burden on my people in this camp. And if it consisted of raising the taxes on any of the citizens of Jasper County, I will not hold back. And that, and that's the way I stand.
But I'm, because there are eight...
And I haven't seen how much, it's maybe a taxation is even going up yet.
It's not an issue.
The millage rate for the county would mean the same as last year.
That's not what you said. I asked her, I asked her what was the give of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty-four, had it gone up? And she said, it had gone up, and she can't be defended. I wanted to know what percentage it went up.
But it went up because of the assessed value of the property, which is what the, which is what the millage rate is. You multiply the assessed value of the property by the millage rate to get the amount of taxes. So if the assessed property increases, which it usually does after it being assessed five years.
The thing I'm totally against is the assessment of property.
Well, that's a legal, it's, the county is required to reassess every five years. That's the state law. So it increases, it is reassessed every five years, and generally property does increase. So that, the reason why it increased last year was as a result of the increase in the assessed value, and that is why the county was able to reduce the millage rate last year, and then to keep it the same this year.
But also, Dr. in all state, you do it every five years, it can come down as well as go up?
It could, but it's based on the professional, based on the professional experience.
But anyway, I'm, I'm voting.
Do we have a motion for, any kind of motion on the budget?
Mr. Chairman, I want to hear the reason why the motion is going down from John Camp and you. Did you want to move a answer, didn't?
I did.
I mean, come on, what about our children?
I'll say, I am very uncomfortable with this budget. All the way around. We have too many things in there that I don't know about. Just one was the coroner. We didn't know about that. Little things. I was at a meeting one time. We watch every dollar. I try to watch every dollar. I'm just going to go with what I've done in the last two years, until I get it down to where I want. Right this year, we had a few more workshops, but it was just me. The last meeting we had, I asked for to take fifty-three hundred dollars out? No. But with the coroner, it came out. I'm elected official. Why didn't, nobody else disagreed with it? Why doesn't it come out? I had to have a vote. But the coroner money came out, no vote. No one asked for a vote. So I say no. Thank you.
I have concerns with County not increasing the millage rate and us working on what we have, and the school district wanting us to give them twenty-six and a half mill increase for operations. I think that if there's additional money to the need, that they can take that out of its own balance. If the county's going to operate off of our kind millage, I think the school district should too.
But if the school district take the money out of their fund balance, that money, they already have that money in arm for what they are going to do. Our children in Jasper County always suffer. Well, let me say, in the public school system, they always suffer because reality goes on and on and says, I have a problem because the bills increase. Okay. I'm Dr. Anderson. Can you explain to me again that the millage, the two difference that we have?
In the mill? The mill increase is a request?
I know what operations mill is for.
No, but it's not going to, it's not increasing.
The debt service mill, we're not asking for a debt service mill increase.
It's operation.
We're asking for an operation, which would tax businesses. We're not taxing residents. The debt service will tax residents. We're not asking for a debt service mill. Those mills remain the same. We are asking for an operational increase for businesses.
Correct. Which is passed on to the businesses that are trying to provide, and we shop at businesses. So I, I just, I don't see, I can't vote for the school district gets twenty-six and a half mills in the county continuing to operate on their same business. And plus, the value of the mill went up, so there's still money that's been coming in as a result of that assessment.
So what are they supposed to do? Just not educate?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that's, you know, not educating, but we give it money for every year that I've been on the county council. But I think that if we're going to be held as a council with those same expectations, the school district should be raised.
Here's my thing. The state and the federal government tell the public schools what they got to waste money. The county can't tell the public schools one thing, what they can do. Nothing. But we got to give them money. The taxpayers have got to pay that money to the public schools of Jasper County or anywhere else in the state, they got to pay that money. But the federal government's gone in, the state's gone in and said, you got to teach this, you got to do this, you got to do this. If, if, if they show much concern, let them furnish you the money. Not that taxpayer furnishes money in Ohio don't say so. I don't believe in the taxpayer furnishing schools money when they don't have no say so what's going on right now. And that's the way, that's the way it's been for the day. The state and federal government has blown them school down in the ground.
But that's a lot trying to take down, and they ain't doing nothing about it, so.
Mr. Kim, you have a question? On the school board, I take a risk, two hundred and thirty dollars average, everybody's going to pay more, which goes to, to the people, industry that are not citizens here, to businesses. Those businesses pass that money along. Now, two hundred and thirty dollars is for a house, one hundred and forty-four. So these businesses have more than one hundred and forty-four thousand. So we're passing the thumb. That's number one. Number two is, we had a referendum, and I brought this up, for cap. Now we're using, we're doing an end around, and we wouldn't be a, a good shepherd of money. We're saying the people of Jasper County did not want an increase. But now they're going to come to us and say, we want the increase.
Where do you want to come? I, I do, I'm sorry, I'm Chair of Sols. I do want to clarify that, Mr. Kim. You didn't bring that out in our very last meeting. And that is not correct information. You also may have mentioned that you read our referendum of penny increase that we wanted to continue. You are correct. There are some individuals that voted the penny down, and there are certain that voted it up. The penny did include capital improvement projects, of which you indicated as you said again, that we've got to allow it in the district to bring those capital projects back to the forefront. That is not true. The referendum only included the following capital projects, and that is what failed. Those projects were the early learning centers at our old West Hartville property and East Street. That's what the referendum had. It also included addressing the actual athletic facilities of both Richmond campus and Hartville campus, as well as the nutrition building. Those were the only capital projects on the penny that failed. We are not here asking you for funding to fund capital projects. When I came before you in June, I provided to you a handout, and I gave you several handouts, and one was this kind of handout here that listed all of the capital projects that we had already included in our fund balance, because there was a question as to what we're using our fund balance for, and you wanted specific information. So I provided that to you. And so what you see in that is the fund balance is what is being funded, not just the fund balance, but also extra funds that we receive from the federal and state government as well. And so there is not a connection between the two, and I want to publicly make that very clear, and I would ask that the record reflects that properly in the minutes, because that is not true. I would never come before this council, number one, out of integrity, of myself and our district, to go around the taxpayers to try to cover up something. That's not me, it would never be me. And I would never come before you and ask you for anything if we did not need it. As I said in my last presentation, I am actually completing this my five, five years in Jasper County, five, and not once have I come to you and asked you for anything. In fact, I don't want to be here now. I drove back from a conference to just be here, to see exactly what the comments and questions would be, so that I could clarify that. However, I want to be very clear to this council that we're not asking for money just to say that we're holding funds. I do also understand that businesses can have fee lows. Number one, we are suffering because of one of those fee lows that literally decrease the meaning energy. So because of the decrease of those funds, we can't depend on those funds as we did last year, because those funds increase as to what we're getting this year. Yes, in order for economic development to continue in this, in this community, your public school system, our public school system, will have to operate effectively and efficiently. In order to do that, over eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel. She has no getting said less about that. And you have to pay people in order to move schools forward. We can sit here, and we can stand, I can stand here and say to you, hey, yeah, federal government demands this, this, that's all true. But every penny we spend is taxpayers' funds, period. They're not ours, they are taxpayers'. So it doesn't matter whether it's come from the federal government or the state, there's still taxpayers' dollars because we all pay them to the system. So there is no differentiation in that. However, because of the taxpayers' funds, yes, I have come before you, this district has come before you to ask for an increase. You voted it down. Okay? So at this point, we then have to go back, and I also shared with you in June, that we now have to decide how we teach children, because we are, by federal law, required to afford every student a free, unhooked, program, and monthly education. And there are things that I am able to count out before that no one else is, because of the public school system. And I know that, that Chair, Ms. Sols, you are the president of the Carolina Alliance Association. So I get that you understand operation funds, and you understand debt service. Debt service may not increase, because I am not asking for residents, literally. But I do understand that residents are small business owners. But I also understand that you also can levy fee lows. I know that, which gives them some type of tax break. So our purpose of coming here was not to put a strain on you. You do have to make tough decisions. But if a tough decision is saying to us, as a school system, the only public school system particularly, that is not chartered or private or parochial, that we are not going to support it because of Anderson, Donnie Anderson's coming for you to go around, well, the taxpayers voted down, that's not a true statement. And that will be clarified today. It has been. And secondly, I'm not going to stand here and admit to you and agree that we are not using taxpayers' funds to fund everything that we do in the ability of what we have. And that's all we have. We have nothing else as a public system to operate on. But you're our fiscal agent. If our fiscal agent is saying no, offering what we have, then we have to go to the door and work, because literally, we can't operate on what we have, or we wouldn't be. I would waste your time, and God knows I would not waste mine.
Ma'am, let me ask you a question. Didn't you just say, didn't you just say, I can't count, talk, eighty-five percent of the school budget go to administrative costs?
I didn't say that. You didn't hear me say that. I said personnel. Personnel is not just administrative. It are, it is teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, cust- It is teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance, all of that. That's not even a trade.
The working party is not the student, the working party.
In fact, correct, in order to have.
I said administrative cost, but eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent of our budget.
Other than the student.
Which means it takes people. But you can pull any school district's budget, any school district's budget across this state and nation. And I promise you that eighty-five percent of their budget, if not more, is in personnel. Because it takes people to teach children. And if you're gonna move a system such as Jasper County forward, you have to have the best educator possible. And what we struggle against are our neighboring districts, Beaufort County. We will never be able to pay what Beaufort County pays, never. We will never be able to pay what Savannah pays. But if you're gonna charge the public school system with educating children so that they're not breaking into their houses and you're not building jailhouses for them, then we are going to have to invest in public education for children. And that's my purpose of asking for the increase.
Dr. Anderson. Well, just again, I'm sorry you took it that way. I think I made a mistake. Yes, there was some happening there, they did. It's the idea that you did not get the referendum passed. And the majority of people that passed it were people that were not associated to the school system. But the people that were associated to the school system did not pass it. So that means that they don't want any more increase on anything from that school. I understand it was a technical lead, and I don't like technical lead. You gave us an alternative. I'm all the work with you, but I'm not, twenty-six mil, two hundred and thirty dollars. We're gonna have a business, an average of two hundred and thirty dollars. What about the person? I just can't fathom that. And I keep, and, and we always go back to the kids, the kids, the kids. Well, there comes a time when we have to say, are we doing it the right way? Are we spending more money and not getting the results? That's all, I don't know. You come to us once a year, per month, that's it. And, and we get it, and we get it within a week after you tell us that, oh, we've had these meetings, that meeting. No one has come to me from the school board and said, this is why we need it. You have to do the work to get the money. And that's my problem is all around. Everybody's asking for money, but nobody wants to do the work and say, okay, let's sit down. You've offered last time, but it was within the week. I, I just didn't have time to do it. I would sit down with you and I would go through everything. I think I'm known for doing that type of thing.
I'm not gonna believe that your time is longer, but I am gonna say this. Okay, for clarity again, and I want the minister to reflect it. Okay, you said two things, that again, you, and I, I don't like to air my very laundry, but let's be clear. The individuals that voted, we all know that the public school system, there was an attack, not on particularly the public school system, but there was a launch against Dr. Anderson. And when it was time to go out, okay, for voting for individuals, we have a Facebook record that happened. It's no secret, I don't have Facebook, and many did you. You can do your own research period. But the point was to get rid of Dr. Anderson, okay? So there was a launch against Dr. Anderson. So the, 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 the voting portion, when it came time to vote, didn't go in their favor. You don't hear anything from those people now, nothing. So you're, you're right, your constituents in Sun City voted for the referendum. And you're right, they don't have children, but they're taxpayers', and they have a vested interest. You said something else, don't do the work, we don't do the work. Councilman Kim, this phone rings twenty-four seven. I never have a chance to turn it off and live a life where I don't answer. I drove, please let me finish. I drove back from Myrtle Beach, okay? Didn't charge the district to stay anywhere. I live in my parents' beach house, okay? Because I don't want to charge this district any more than I have to. The beauty of all of this is I got up this morning to do the work, to be here. I didn't have to come here. I'm not paid to be here, but I'm here because I do do the work. The young people that inhabit Jasper County School District, they can't, some of them can't go anywhere else to a charter school or a private school because they're not accepted. My kids who have a record, who wear ankle bracelets, who do X, Y, and Z, the only people who will educate them will be me. And the respect that I have for those children, our children, and the respect that I have for this community, I come every day and I give my all. And I will still give my all, whether you say yes or whether you say no, because that's my passion. I'm here for a purpose. And you made another statement about the outcome, whether we're doing it right. In a year, I came to a system in 2018 that was failing. And within that first year, I moved the district forward. Covid happened, and yes, everybody took a hint. But I can promise you that what we're doing will move our children forward. And I don't know where I'm getting the money from, I don't know. But I can tell you what I do know. I am going to fight for the education of the children in Jasper County School District, because that is what I signed up for.
I'd just like to make a reply to that. I didn't mean to do the, I didn't mean to do the work of administration. I mean, do the work, tell us what's going on. You don't give us time, enough time. I go to your meetings once in a while, I read it, that's it. You should come to be here notifying us of what's going on.
And I did that, Councilman Kim, I came before this board the same night that I knocked. Madam Chair, Madam Chairman, I came before this council, and I gave you an update. And that's a two-way street, Councilman Kim, it's a two-way street. If you want to be here more, I will be here more. If you invite me the first Friday in Sun City, I stop, and I just my steps and I show up. I have no problem with going around this nation, seeing under the half of Jasper County School District, because who can tell me, anybody can tell the story, I can. Because the work that is put into Jasper County School District doesn't happen overnight. And just as you publish your justice on mine, I publish mine. If you want more of me, Councilman Kim, you have to contact me, you have my direct number. If you want to see more of me, invite me, I'm here. And if what you're saying is because we didn't do more is why you voted it down, then that's what, Councilman Kim, I will go ahead and call you, and I will get on your book, and I'll be here every month. Because all I have is time. Because I'm not going anywhere until the law says I'm here.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Chair, read the paper. Uh, Mr. Tusk.
I was gonna ask if anyone needs some parliamentary advice as to where you are, to where a path forward might lie.
Well, right now, wherever you are, it's gonna have a motion to approve agenda or amend. We're here to tell you what the consequences of that are. So let's have a motion and let's move it forward. Okay, Mr. Tusk.
At this point, we're still discussing the consideration of third reading of the second pass. Any members that voted, and the majority of your members said no, could make a motion to reconsider. How ask to consider this pass, move to reconsider it, write it back to the table for another vote. That opens a four-figure dinner, a motion to amend a particular provision in it so that you can vote the third reading when you have a budget. Or another process that you could use is move the table into a consur meeting or a special meeting or the next meeting to give you time to flesh out, I think you want to flesh out that there, as well as pass a continuing resolution to fund the county budget at the current operating level or current levels, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, so that we don't have a June thirtieth. So I'm one crisis, and you will. Or, third option is something that's sometimes used, resist a motion to divide the question. Because you have two main issues, of here you have the county budget, and you have the school budget. You can divide the question, take them up separately. You can pass the county budget if you want to pass the budget or not, you can pass the school district budget or not. And if you only pass one of them, you can take one of the others. I just mentioned that to another time, sir. That to me is the parliamentary path that you follow so that you don't have to start over again with the first reading, the second reading, the third.
Can I add something? What are the wishes of the council?
You gotta do something, because if you don't pass this budget, um, the authorities not gonna pay, nobody gonna get no money. So see, when you're thinking about one, you gotta think of all. You gotta do something.
So we have a motion coming from any of the council members.
Just a question. If we do a motion to reconsider, then we have a motion to divide? So we can continue on?
The motion to reconsider stays back. You start fresh again, you can revoke if you will.
The other end?
You can divide, that's, that's parliamentary, because you have a multiple question. You can say, I wanna, I wanna vote on A, I wanna vote on B. But we have to do a motion to reconsider, first? And then we go to that? And then do we have to vote on the vote at the same time, or?
No, that's what you divide. You pick, whichever one you want to say is the first question. Then you vote on that, then you do the second question. Which is why I came up, if you only pass one of those, you can then move to argue if you're not ready to pass. You can move the table to give you time to workshop and discuss the question at the next council meeting, whatever. That's just, it's preserving options. Is that clear enough, Mr. Tusk?
Yes.
I just, Commissioner Tusk, you just be hopeful that the council could come up with a motion that's powerful for everyone instead of kicking.
Right, I'd like to get out of here and get a decision.
I'll make a motion to approve, to reconsider, to approve the budget, uh, keeping the county budget at the current mileage rate as well as the school district at their current mileage rate.
That requires two votes. You have to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, second. All in favor, raise your hand. Also make a motion.
To divide. Motion to divide.
Yeah. The school budget from the county. Yes, it's, it's, so I'm gonna move, it's not gonna be a discussion question.
The, the, I'm calling for a motion to approve the county budget as presented to include the school district mileage rate to remain the same without the twenty-six and a half mil increase. Do I have a second? David.
If I can clarify, are you leaving, when I first heard you, what are you doing with the county mileage?
It's staying the same as presented. And I'll then, and.
But the motion on divide.
Come back to school. No, I'm saying, you come back later. You gonna come back to school.
Can I, can I paraphrase one just so? I think you're saying, I think you're saying that you moved to approve the budget provided that the county and school operating budget remain the same as twenty-two, twenty-three.
Exactly, yeah.
That doesn't apply. You want to change the mileage?
Yes, no, no increase. I made a motion, I have a second. Calling for a second one more time, or it's gonna fail for a second. I, my motion was.
Yeah, what was the first motion you made that we just pulled?
To reconsider, which we had to do, and I wanted to bring up a second motion.
And then I made a motion, which nobody heard, to say divide. Which means we divide the school budget from the county budget.
My, well, I see. Give me a second. My motion is to accept the county budget as presented with no mileage rate increase to include the school district budget without a mileage rate increase. So no increase. That is my motion. Do I have a second, please?
I have a second, it's so we can discuss, but I don't understand. So the school district.
Wait a minute, we got, we got a second.
I have a second.
And now we go to discussion.
Yeah. I'm asking, I just want to be clear. So you're gonna keep the budget that we have for the county and the school district. So the school district cannot come back and ask for the budget to be amended.
The county's budget will remain the same at its current mileage rate, and so will the school district. There's no increase for the school district on their budget. The mileage rate will stay the same as the current budget here. No twenty-six and a half mil increase.
No increase, you're not even.
Yeah, we're not doing it, the school district get it. That is my motion, we got a second.
Second.
All in favor, second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, those are the gains, raise your hand. Your budget passes. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next, we have David Tavell's consideration of third reading, ordinance zero dash twenty-two-three dash eleven, Jasper County Council's staff to make temporary moratorium on action changes and administrative processing and permitting for approval of large residential, subdivision, major residential commercial development projects and assignments intended to travel all over the planning area, planning or setting from temporary moratorium to local action cases, and any orders adopted and related to issues.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this discussion, June fifth meeting, we went over this moratorium, which is a particular, it's a particular area north of one-seventy, and so we know where the area is. There was a discussion about allowing concept.
Here, listen, listen.
Discussion about allowing exemption for projects that had come and received the concept plan approval prior to the first reading of ordinance, uh, which I read that's, I think the actual rule for that are correct. So this one has an exemption at an end to those projects that have received the concept plan approval either the planning commission two-point-eight-one or the planning commission county council, which actually eight-point-one. That's the only change from third reading.
Uh, we have a motion for approval for a moratorium.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman, I'm sorry. I neglected to say that over the weekend, we received a letter from the Seattle Florida bill that invited the council asking us to consider more for accident areas than we can because of the development.
I made a motion at the moratorium.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say goodbye, say a aye. All right, motion carries. Um, next, we have the David Tavell's consideration of third reading to amend the Jasper County Code of Ordinances, including laws before or the committee in chapter two administration, Jasper County Order of Terrorance Commission.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of council, June fifth meeting, there were discussions about some amendments to this particular order regarding makeup of the airport commission, which we set up, which was made to allow up to two non-resident business owners to be on the commission. That may incorporate into the final version, I provided the council with a red line version of showing where that is done and how it was done to the ordinance up there. I made, I think, two more, I'll call them clarification, determiner errors, that I changed the word page and paragraph, the rough change to make the patch of the, 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 the paragraphs to take. I think it's the orders. Um, and making sure that the existing template ordinances that were approved in twenty-one will now include a hurricane warning, planes being moved or be at risk of the owner of a hurricane, and suffocation insurance claims so that we are consistent with our insurance policy. There's been much discussion about this, we've had. There's been much discussion about this. We've had workshops. I've been with the FAA. I've had phone conferences with the attorney for the South Carolina Air Ops Commission Association. Provided multiple memorandums on this. And then to show may have received some emails from the, some of the members out there of the recent, recent area of, kind of, whatever it is. But I'll, rather than, than try and rehash what I've been through the council before, I stand ready to answer any questions over what's in front of you. You might have up here. So this is third reading. Also provided good letters from the FAA.
Any questions? Anybody, Mr. Garvey? Mr. Kim? Ms. Atkins? Ms. Clark? At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval of third reading.
I make a motion that they should rule about a third reading.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor, they signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll turn the dial over to Chairman Clark to complete the meeting.
The chair has opened the floor to the public. We have one, somebody at a time, if you need. Who's right in the clock? Three minutes.
I'll read back, Ms. Clark. Thanks. I originally planned to, of course, all good morning, wrapping, whatever it is. The council and attendees, I signed up speaking in hopes of persuading you to vote no for the ordinance that you just passed regarding the air audit commission. But I'll take a few minutes to, if you bear with me, to share some thoughts on how government's outreach might impact, say, boat dockers. As the county actions have been active or activated. Imagine, if you will, that the state decides to take possession of all boat dockers on public waterway. If you have a dock, you have a choice of disassembling it or surrendering possession to the state. You surrender it, the state will make lease, a portion of the dock back to you for a monthly rate of, say, three hundred fifty bucks. And because your old dockers can't accommodate more than one boat, then the state will rent space to other boats. They could also put private mariners out of business. They could take over fuel sales. But they only offer fuel service Tuesdays through Saturday, nine a.m., five a.m., all holidays. And of course, your former dock now has lots of rules and regulations regarding how you may use it, what you may keep on it. They come out inspected and, and then you send emails to state officials to appeal those actions, but no one replies. And you can get an opportunity to challenge your threats on their facts or reasoning when you like to do it. They've convinced you that their grab for private property and business is fair and just. Well, through our real late years. I signed the hand lease in 2020, and in essence, that account now owns my name. But in reality, they didn't send me that to the company. And my final encouragement here is to level all things over. Appoint a competent air audit commission and empower them to bring some common sense and some sanity to the airport management, planning instruments. Assuming that's my application, my remarks to all.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Richie the question, please.
No, sir.
Richie.
Mr. When a man doing public comment, you cannot ask them anything. We respond to them through the attorney of the county, the most good. Okay?
Okay. I'll, well, I'll, you know, respond to Andrew, Mr. Tevill.
You tell them, you tell them, tell them. He can respond, he can tell you what to do.
If I might paraphrase, I'll stick my neck out here. As Tom Johnson, when he was chairman, he used to say during public comment, we do not respond to public comment because it's not on the agenda. The council can only speak as I hold in response to that. So generally, what the course of action is, is to ask the administrator, if I'm needed, I get brought in, to respond to the comments or concerns of the public made in public comment. Is that a fair revision, Mr. Clark?
I'm allowed to ask the administrator?
You can, you can ask us to assist council in understanding something by contacting a working person.
About what Richie was talking about.
You're, you're welcome to ask us to help you get questions answered, yes, sir.
What I, what I wanted to know. What I wanted to know. Has anybody made a move? Like I said, we know, we know we got a lot of discussions and one thing and another going on at the airport. Have the top, many fathers, I don't know how many fathers you have and how many, seven, five, or eight fathers, and we're only that way. Have y'all sit down with the top? Show them what they've been doing, what the articles and all the pieces rolled up, what they gonna be offered. Has anybody done that with the top? See if they're willing to accept or see what, what gonna be offered to them. Has anybody done that?
Mr. Garvey, we've had public meetings with pilots present so they know the direction, everything we've done via the orphans and so forth have been public, just as you do with every ordinance. And we've had numerous individual meetings with pilots who have hangers out there explaining to them for some area. The problem we ran into was many of the pilots who were invited decided not to show up. And so as the landlord, it's very difficult to deal with tenants if they refuse to show up and talk to you. So there has been some of that, and we've done the best we can trying to communicate the whole situation. We don't hide anything or willing to talk with anybody who wants to meet, but we have not had those, those requests. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
Yes, ma'am.
Next, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. My report was very short this week because we were involved with a special call meeting. I did do a progress report for you, and the administrator for just wanted to make note it on two on there, South Carolina County Workers' Consultation Trust. It's noteworthy that we have approved the experience certification number. Now, you know, all that's subject to change. You know what kind of year we'll have this year. But just, I can totally just tell you that we're at the thirteenth best of reporting counties this way in the trust, which is a huge improvement. I recall the two thousand and five, in two thousand and four, we were at the very bottom of this and remained there for seven years. It was a combination of reporting workers' complaints and keeping them down. And if you have a chance, if you see, Mrs. Cole Holt, our director, please congratulate her on her achievements because they showed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, we call for a wish you do, Jerry.
So?
I have a second. And pop for the movement, second, all in favor, say aye, and stand up.
All right.